I'm sorry to be a pain in the neck, but is there, I don't know what you guys have there for microphones or what have you, but I can hear Nick pretty clear, but then when, obviously when you were speaking and I don't know who else was speaking, I couldn't hear what was being said. And then if you guys, because you guys are micro-stopping to me, if you guys wouldn't mind saying like your name before you say whatever you're saying to someone listening to it, please.
We will have to make an effort to speak up loud because the mic is over there. And if I set the mic here, they can't hear Nick as well. So it's a kind of a matter of this mic or that mic, but.
Screen.
Screen, yeah, so we have to be, we have to be loud. Can you hear us? Can you hear me Dana? Yeah, so that, we just have to project our voices.
Well, don't yell at me.
That's, you never do that with outside voices.
Nothing's our outside voices.
Right.
So I'll just start with the notes that I have kind of written down. And one of my concerns that I think we kind of never really talked about a lot in the previous meeting was I wasn't seeing any specific academic goal. And I know that I have in my notes here that I had read a goal from Windsor. And then there was another one from Coventry that was more specific about, I'll just read the Windsor one. All students will demonstrate a strong work ethic, exemplary academic skills, effective oral and written communications, technological aptitude and necessary skills to work collaboratively with others. So I just remembered our last meeting, that was one of my concerns. I felt like we kind of didn't bring the real academic in any of these goals.
Most of the, generally boards can have an academic goal that has some, some wide kind of interpretation to it because our SIP goals tend to have very specific academic goals. So if you did, you probably want to make it sufficiently broad to kind of umbrella the rest of it. And then the school goes, traditionally the schools have had academic goals, culture goals, and RTI, SRBI goals. So those have been the three main categories of goal. So sometimes boards will have overarching goals that those that nest under. One thing to keep in mind for this year is that the state of Connecticut has provided to the school systems, you know, the, an opportunity to have what it calls flexibility, a flexibility program or flexible goals this year. So the professional development evaluation committee accepted the state's offer to have these flexible goals. So these goals this year for the 2021 year, because the goal, you know, the evaluation process is dictated by the state of Connecticut. And it typically dictates a lot of how the evaluation process has to be executed. But this year it's given this flexibility for 2021 because of the COVID situation. So it has a focus on teachers will develop a student learning goal with a minimum of two indicators under the following areas, and it is social and emotional learning, student engagement, family engagement. And it can have an academic goal, but that academic goal has to be of mutual agreement with the administrator. And it still has to have some focus on those kinds of areas. So it's trying to emphasize for the 2021 year, social and emotional, student engagement, and family engagement because of the COVID situation. It doesn't mean that there cannot be an academic goal for a teacher, but it's putting emphasis very heavily on those other areas. And that's for 2021 only. So the PDAC committee did, they are a statutory committee of the faculty, admin, and teachers. And they, they recommend to me what to do and they, they wanted to do it with the flexibilities plan for Connecticut.
And I'm also bad that a lot of that type of articulation would come from the portrait of a graduate. And so having the conversation, the discussion about what do we want to focus on three months roughly, I believe, before this report comes out, which is going to articulate using data, a variety of educational expectations, that I'm not sure that's in your best interest to lock it in right now. If it was a year away, sure, then you have a year to implement something while you're moving along. So that was, is one of the reasons, I certainly encouraged that as well. But I did hear that from a couple of people that, you know, it doesn't make sense to get too detailed until that report comes out, which you cover because, you know, if you're ensuring the completion and implementation, those goals that have been built through a very elaborate process are going to be, they'll be covered goals.
What's shared on the screen right now is the, the work that was done on Portrait of a Graduate from last year. So this is as far as we got through last year and the year a little bit before that and last year. So this is, you know, just to give it context, the mission, belief.
But I see academics stuff in, all throughout that, that Portrait of the Graduate. Critical creative thinking, effective independent collaborative work, innovative problem solving, all of those things are academic. So I don't think we need to have an explicit academic goal on top of the Portrait of the Graduate goal. I think that covers it.
I also, sorry, Kate, sorry. Okay, also, I am going to just quickly share for a matter of context, the state's, the state's flexibilities document, just so you have a flavor of that. This just scrolling up and down. This is one of the communications from the state on the flexibilities document from the commissioner Cardona for teacher evaluation. And then what I was referring to before was the teachers will develop a minimum of, and these were the goal areas.
Well, I just want to point out that this stuff right here is teacher level, like classroom level kind of orientation. And when we're thinking about the goals for the Board of Education, we should be thinking about the entire district. So like we should be thinking about what all of the classrooms do above, like the class, you know, so in terms of this year, the flexibility, I don't really know that that informs our discussion all that much because we're talking about the whole district and not the specifics. You know, like getting into the teacher eval, admin eval, et cetera. So I just wanted to put that out there because it's a different lens, it's a different perspective. We do have flexibility. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't concentrate and look at academics, but we're doing that through the Portrait of the Graduate. So I'm just putting that out there.
Right, and I, and so to Kate's point, I'm sharing these so you have a sense of what is happening at the level of the school level, the teacher level. So whatever goals you're setting, you want them in some way to mesh. They don't have to stick to that. But just so you understand what, you know, the Portrait of a Graduate has in it, what the flexibilities document has in it, you know, so you know, for instance, there's an emphasis on social, emotional learn, that kind of thing. So that you wouldn't want to do something so far out of that range that it didn't cover, you know, but so the umbrella is wide enough to catch all of the different things that we'd be doing.
So.
I guess, I don't remember this.
Whatever you do, word it loud.
All right, um, just looking at the academic goals that you just put up there on the flexibility, or the goals on the flexibility document, I, I guess it's slightly concerning that there's no academic goals for 2021. Am I, am I missing something there? I guess what, what are the academic goals like in a, in a real life year?
Yeah, well, they can choose a, there, there is an alternative option for an academic goal, but it is not emphasized the way it is in a typical year. And that's because the whole COVID thing. They just wanted to make sure that, that the staffs, the schools were focusing on the welfare, engagement, contact, you know, bringing along, that kind of thing. So they're still there, but they, they don't have the same level of emphasis. And they're, they're also talking about redoing the entire requirement plan for teacher evaluation in the state. And they're giving us a little taste in some ways of how that might look. So, you know, that, that's just, just giving you a contextual kind of glimpse into what's happening, you know, in that side of things.
So I guess my question for everybody else, then, you guys on the screen too, is do you feel that the Portrait of a Graduate goal does encompass the academic goals that we want to move forward with past COVID? Because I don't think we can just focus on COVID.
I would, I would expect that.
Yeah, it's designed to.
See, I would love to be part of that conversation when that report is done and you start to revisit the academic part of your goals, should you need to. Or again, you already, you'll have something in terms of a goal to implement the, the portrait. But it doesn't have to be all that you talk about. I think you want to use that as a foundation, as the framework. But for example, there might be, just because of the people that were part of that, one component may be left out. The people on this board may say, you know what, this is great, we accept all this. Because when you put something like this in someone else's hands, there becomes an expectation that all the work they're going to do becomes your work. And because you are the Board of Ed and you do ultimately make the decision, it might not be exactly the same by the time you're done with it. But I would, I'm going to guess that in general, you're going to look at those recommendations and want to implement them. But it doesn't mean that there might be a couple of other things that you say, well, you know what, this is the Board of Ed. You might say, we also need to do X. I would hope that there's an alignment between the other work, and I suspect there would be. But it doesn't preclude the board from doing more. It just, I think, trying to have this conversation now when all that good work is right around the corner, I guess to me is, it might, it's kind of like back in, in June, when they're saying school might open next week, school might open a month from now. You might be going to school full time, you might be going to, you know, we don't know enough to necessarily anticipate what it's going to look like yet. So my guess is that maybe this time next year, for example, or even maybe next spring, after, you know, once you sort of nestle through the budget process, is to maybe have that conversation, you know, or when it comes to the board depleted, that maybe the need for you to at least accept it, at least endorse it or whatever. I mean, I'm not sure what the process would look like for the boards who would embrace it. But that at that point, it might require a conversation to go, I really like this, I think we need to, have we, did we consider this? At least to have that conversation. And maybe they did. And a large group of educators said, you know what, it's either it's covered here or we did think about that. Quite frankly, the vast majority of us don't believe that's a priority. And again, you can live with that or you can decide to enhance it. So those are conversations that will take place afterwards. It's not that you're giving, you're not giving up any responsibility or any authority. I think you're just waiting for the appropriate time to utilize that authority, if that makes sense.
Let's go to Karen, she has her hand up over there.
Eric.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, when we talk about academic performance, Portrait of a Graduate, academic performance is not just about getting A's, B's, C's, whatever. It's about an overall success of our students, and that's what Portrait of a Graduate work is about. And it comes into law. So I think if you're talking about academic success of our students, it's in there. So I agree with just keeping a Portrait of a Graduate work in our sights.
You're not bypassing that conversation, you're just putting it in the appropriate time and place.
I, I, I agree. I just, you know, I think we're kind of pigeonholing ourselves by making the goal of just academic success type of conversation. It should be much broader.
Anyone else for number one? So let's move to number two.
We didn't think this was going to be a long evening. I, I want to remind ourselves, we did have that conversation, so. And you did a lot of work upfront, so. So number two, and again, these are reminders, just trying to frame what I collected, but maintain a culture and climate conducive to high levels of future learning, which would include behavioral types of things, health and safety, et cetera, et cetera. It wasn't just, you know, quietly walking down the hallways, but to encompass, you know, a lot of different things. So I throw that out there and I want feedback.
Does anyone have something for number two?
If I can't hear you, I know they can't.
Number two.
Do you have anything, guys?
Yes, I do. Maintain culture and climate conducive to high levels of teaching and learning. We're not really talking about student success. I don't know if we want to say that. You know, because the purpose again is about the 2,900, I can't remember the number, students that we have in Talon School. So I'm very interested in the action steps for this one, but I would like to include something about leading to student, individual student success.
And again, these are your goals. I, I, in my mind, teaching and learning encompasses learning.
Yeah.
But, you know, there, there's something to be, I mean, if you could come up with a suggestion, I'll just write it down and we can talk about it.
No, I, I'm actually talking about just kind of tweaking number two. And we just add teaching and learning, something about students, maintain a culture, that could do some, the high level of teaching and learning, comma, leading to individual student success. I like that.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Can we also make sure that, this is Karen, can we also make sure that we are including our student reps here in the conversation? If they want to pipe in?
Yeah, Alexandra, did you want to, did you want to pop in on, on any of it? Do you have anything you want to share right now?
My audio is like really cool, but she can't completely hear everything.
Well, it may not be your audio, it's a big room and everybody's standing on the other end of the microphone, so.
I've also had terrible Wi-Fi all day though, so I keep getting kicked from things.
We just want to make sure that you and Simmer are feeling comfortable in jumping in here on the goals.
Yeah, I know Simmer, she loves, she has a SAP thing, I have to go pretty soon too, but yeah.
Okay. I like what he added on there, leading to student success, I like that. Laura?
I was going to say, I, I agree, I like that leading to individual student success, I think was, aimed at what I'm trying to say with academics before. And now I think it's included besides, good.
Good.
Anyone else? I didn't hear two. I actually do.
This is going well tonight.
So let's.
Well, not me chasing us.
Well, you know, usually, it's the first goal takes the longest and the second is a little less. By the time you get to the end, you're done, but we'll see. All right, so that's goal two, goal three. And actually, oh, we have to do. Provide resources, and remember, these are all the talent in Board of Education shall, provide resources, including non-additional revenue sources to ensure quality education for all students. I know that couldn't be better.
Yeah.
But the conversation revolved around being creative, looking for alternative sorts of, sources of revenue or resources that don't necessarily go back to the same well each time and that, you know, try to find more creative ways of finding resources.
You're going to have to sell me on this one.
Reenie?
So I think what that is about is that year after year, and I'm pretty sure Karen is probably being on the board as long as she has been, can attest to the fact that generally speaking, every year as you go forward, you have two choices. You either increase the budget, or if you can't do that, which we've seen is not really happening, especially with declining enrollment, you're going to cut programs. So what are your other options? And those are to look for other ways to raise revenue so that we can support our programs and not have to cut. So for example, you may consider bringing in tuition students in those, from those districts that don't have a high school, things like that. So that's what, that's what it's about. And personally, I am totally for that because I don't want to keep seeing the cuts year after year. And I don't see, you know, really a huge increase in, you know, tax revenue coming our way anytime soon because it's not been happening.
Especially if we don't ask for any money. So this is the issue, right? We, we, we keep putting this on Dr. Willetts and find ways to find money to, to ensure quality education. A, what is a quality education? And B, you know, what more could we do? We have tuition, we have, you know, we find money everywhere. Like it's, it's, you know, are we willing to actually provide resources to ensure quality education? So that's what I need to be sold on because I don't see that we are willing to do that.
I just, I think that Reenie was touched base on the fact that, you know, there, it's not unlimited supply that we can get money from. Therefore, we kind of need to adapt to try and find what works.
Right, but historically, we've done that. And, and we've, we've had to continue to cut even though we found these different ways to bring in revenue. So like we've already done that. So what's new about this? This is the same old thing where we don't want to spend money on education. And so on that board that.
I don't, I don't think it's that we're not spending money. I think it's just trying to think outside the box to.
And I, I think it needs to be worded differently because
That's fine.
This is not, historically, in my time on the board, this is not where we usually come from. When we have our budget discussions, the first discussion we have is what are the needs of our district and our students? Not where it can be cut. So I, I do have a problem with awarding on this. And yes, we should be looking, we, we are always looking for creative ways to deal with revenue. But, but let's be realistic that our increases have not even been aligned with inflation. So I, I really have a problem with what we're saying here. If that's what, if what Reenie's saying is what you want to say there, then I, I have a big problem with that.
So what might be helpful is, and I, I'm not sure if there's any more of the purple ones on that sheet, but some of the things that I had written down that captured this part of the conversation included consider ways to work efficiently, public sources of revenue, business academy, tuition students, efficiency, I put in parentheses, effectiveness of administration, and cost avoidance. And I, there, looks like there's a couple more.
Yeah, the, the other PHS, provide resources necessary to ensure quality, including non-traditional sources of revenue.
Which is kind of what the, the goal was, yeah. So it wasn't all about, and like I said, I just put something down to give us a place to start working from. It wasn't all about just looking for additional sources of revenue. It was, I, I think in essence, that the board acknowledges that if we only do things the way we've always done them, and that's not how, that's everywhere, that we don't necessarily have additional tools to do some of the other things we need to do. And so it's a matter of looking internally and externally to one, create efficiencies where they might not exist. And again, I, knowing school districts the way they are, they've been doing that for 20 years anyway. But then to try and look at some non-traditional sources like everybody else is doing. Again, that's part of the problem, everybody's looking for the same pot of air to the rainbow that you are. But that's really kind of the impetus behind what I wrote down this way. But really encompasses a lot more than just, let's look for some other, some other pot to get the money out of. But really to recognize that if we are going to maintain the work we need to do, that we may need to figure out other ways of having resources available to do it.
Okay, and, and I want to push back on that a little bit because we had a point one percent increase this year. Previous year, point five four percent, and previous year, point seven two percent, previous year, zero percent. So we're not doing things the way we've always done them. We've been continuing to cut and to cut and to cut and to cut and to cut because we are not willing to say to the taxpayers, hey friends, we need more money so that we can take care of education. Because we're not willing to do that. And honestly, I, I, that's not okay with me. So, you know, this whole looking for more money, that, that's already been done. And the fact that we're not, like recognizing that is irresponsible on our part. So that's where I'm coming from, Nick. And I know other districts are different, but our district has been running on a shoestring budget for years and years and years, so much so that our tech to had to help us to get Chromebooks. That's unacceptable. That's unacceptable to me. We are supposed to make sure we have a quality education for our kids in Talon. And we have to be willing to say to the town council, hey friends, we need more money so that we can do this. How can we figure this out? And that's not what's been happening, and that's not okay.
I do have to say, Nick, when you were going through the listing, like I was just writing a couple of where you have the create efficiencies and things like that. And I think that verbiage is a little bit more helpful, I think, to craft a sentence around how, and it's not necessarily just including that non-traditional resource, you know, just, you know. Like I said, if you could kind of go through those again, just.
Creating efficiencies is a false narrative because you're, what, what that says, what that has underneath it is saying that it's not already efficient. And if anybody goes into any classrooms, you would see how efficient these teachers are doing it, how these administrators are so efficient. Creating efficiencies is not accurate and it is not fair to our children.
So we shouldn't have that as a goal, to have that continue all the time? That's all it is. It's a goal to continue that type of work. What is the problem with that? We would want to continue that, wouldn't we? Just like we want to continue student learning. Should we get rid of ensuring student success?
That's ridiculous, Reenie. That's just ridiculous. I, what I'm saying, yeah, you, wow, that's fine. What I'm saying is that when we say something like, as the, wait, so we're the Board of Education and we represent all of, all of the town, right? So we're saying, hey town, these are our goals and we need to create efficiencies. That makes the Talon Schools look bad. And I don't want to do that anymore. I want the, I want the Talon Schools to look good. Why aren't we doing this work if we're just going to, you know, like make us look bad? That's not, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I feel my feelings on that, but.
Let's look for it also. I like that.
I just wish everything was always such a battle. I'm looking at the goals from our last board, and there was support and encourage specialized programs that serve as alternatives to outplacement, support and encourage the development of tuition programs, engage superintendents to explore and research shared service opportunities.
I can't hear you, Christina.
Christina is reading the previous board's goals. I'll, I can share that document right now.
To support and encourage specialized programs that can serve as alternatives to outplacement, the development of tuition programs, as well as engage the superintendent to explore and research shared service opportunities. I mean, these are just, I think what Nick had written, it kind of encompasses all of that, but in a way that's, you know, just more concise in, in one line. And we're not going to stop looking for ways to improve our education system without always, you know, asking for more. And I think that's kind of what this, this goal is saying.
How about a couple different?
I think we need to reword it.
Yeah, how about this for a couple? I'm throwing these out as a couple, a couple words that might change it, might change it too much. But if we say advocate for appropriate resources, including non-traditional revenue sources to ensure. In other words, because you're, I think you're right, we can't advocate our responsibility to try and, I'll use the term, fight for what we need for our kids. Always understanding that we're only part of a, of a process that other people have alternate, alternate goals of their own, which is keep taxes down. However, part of, and this is something that Kate talks about, our White House training talks about being advocates for our public schools. So whether there's an expectation that the board needs to be more aggressive in looking for resources internally and externally, which maybe it's a stronger way of saying it, but still with the same intent, we want to. but still with the same intent, we want to ensure that we have enough to do what we need to do. Whether it's at the local level, whether it's being aggressive, looking for other alternatives. Uh, there are school districts that I work with that are like, they're practically full-time looking for tuition students because they know that they can fill their school, they can either have a happy school or fill their.
Some schools have an assistant superintendent, Nick?
Pardon me?
Do those schools have an assistant superintendent?
Um, uh, the one that, the one that I'm thinking of does.
To do that work?
So, but I, again. I.
I'm like, can I just say, I would like to see some kind of introduction that, if you're gonna, if we're gonna do a goal like this, I would like some kind of introduction that says something like, um, with be cognizant of the needs of our district. You know, I think that that should be part of it. That this isn't just about aggressively looking for resources implies that we're not already being aggressive. We're.
I like the word advocacy.
Looking for grants, um, you know, we're, we're working with legislators to get our grants. We're, you know, and all of that is happening, I, I don't know. I'm looking for something to say, I, I don't have it yet in my head, but something that starts with understanding the needs of our district and our students. And yes, advocating for them. You know, things like a director of curriculum would be, would be work in the pavement on getting grants and you name it. All that other stuff that you guys are talking about and we don't have one. So sometimes you gotta spend money to try and save money.
Reenie? I, I was just gonna make a suggestion that maybe we just use some of the goals that were already written before that were acceptable. And then we don't have to move forward with that at all. You know, some of the ones that Christina just read off, maybe get to the point a little bit more about it and then we don't have to, um, go back to the drawing board.
So trying to recap how we got to this was when we were doing brainstorming, talking about the things that were important to you. And there were several, um, comments made about needing to have the resource, the res, having the resources necessary to do the work. And all of this comes about, and, and the conversation went several different directions. It went in terms of, we have to not waste money. And again, while I think all of us understand how school districts have done nothing but become more efficient over the years, um, that there is always in the back of our mind, can we do something else? But there was, so that was part of it. Can we find something internally that frees us up to do the other work that we need to do? That there are right now, with declining enrollment every, well, other than a couple communities, um, enrollment's going up, it are down everywhere. So they're all faced with the same problem you're faced with. And it's really going to be the ones that have the plans first that will probably benefit the most from bringing kids in from another district. But the idea was, are there, do we have facilities or services that could generate revenue for us and help kids learn, um, from other districts? And, um, while it wasn't said implicitly, there was also just the idea that, and it was said a couple times, there are grant opportunities. And again, I know people, in fact, the State Department's really good about pushing out to everybody, these are all the grants that are available. But, you know, is there a more, um, I'm trying, a, a different approach to that that might make sense, I don't know. And again, obviously, people are thinking about these things all the time, but I don't want to use the word assume too much because some people don't like it very much. Yes?
I just wrote this down, I want to read it out loud for everyone to hear. Assess, uh, assess our district needs and advocate for res, advocate for resources while continuing to seek alternatives to outplacement, tuition programs, and shared services. Something along that line, it includes what we had in the previous board goals and I think it encompasses what we're trying to say there. Um, but it also says we're, we're continuing to do that. Like, we're not going to just ignore it, but we'd like to continue to do that as well.
I can get behind something like that.
So the board shall, right, that's what we're.
The board shall, yeah.
Assess our district needs and advocate for resources while continuing to include alternatives to outplacement, tuition programs, and shared services. We don't even need all three of those, it was just, well, that's what I kind of cherry picked from the previous goals.
Did you get all that?
Dana? Hi, uh, this is Dana. I just want us to be cognizant of our last meeting that we had when we were talking about board goals. I believe I posed a question and deferred it to our, um, board members that had been on the previous board, Ken, Kate, and Christina. And I believe Christina's response to me was, um, that, uh, the last, the last board didn't su- support her on the board and she wanted to move forward. So I as well want to move forward and I want to make sure that we're inclusive of all ideas here that are being posed to the table. But I, I want to remember, you know, bring back, circle back to that comment that was made, um, that we do need to be moving forward. So, um, let's, I, I appreciate her bringing information to the table, I appreciate the compromise on this. Um, but I just, I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that, um, not look in the rearview mirror and look forward as Christina. Um, so politely trying at our last board set meeting. Thank you.
So you came up with language, I'm hearing that people are comfortable with that.
I like this one better than the initial.
Yeah, well, like I said, I had to come up with a placeholder, but I, I was hoping you would make it yours.
I don't, I'm kind of sensing that Dana's not comfortable with it though, because as I, I did look back at the past schools, but I, I looked at the past schools to just kind of relate to how they kind of tie into what we were trying to do together here.
Can we, oh, I'm sorry, Karen.
Can we add, um, after advocate for resources, can we add to meet those needs?
It feels like there's too many needs in there. Assess our district.
Oh.
To a public, uh, for resources to achieve them.
To achieve them, yeah, I don't like having the double wording with needs and needs.
So assess our district needs, uh, needs and advocate for resources to achieve them. I don't know if that's needs or something we can achieve, but, uh.
Um, and this is Dana, I just wanted to, I'm not disagreeing with the conversation that we're having currently by any means. I think it's good that we're, we're all coming from different, um, points of view and we're kind of making it what our board is attempting to do, right? And that's what our community is so desperately craving from us. And I continue to say that, um, time and time again, that our community is, is asking for us to work as a co-respected group. I just want to make sure, you, this, that was a request that I made mention, it was to defer to some of the information from our previous board and I was, I wasn't included in that conversation, it was immediately shut down. So I just want us to be cognizant of the fact that when I brought this up, last time we had this meeting, it was, it was not as welcoming as this conversation has been. So I appreciate that this is welcoming, I appreciate that we're working on the consensus. I just think that we also need to make sure, Christina, just as you felt very stifled on the last board event group, um, I'm feeling that way in several aspects of, of this conversation, so, um.
So, if I have a suggestion on language change, um, instead of achieve, assess our district needs and advocate for resources to meet that.
I had ma- maintain to.
Or maintain.
I don't want it to sound like you're not striving here.
We want to include the, the clause to ensure quality education for all students.
Well, we, uh, the first, the first, well, the first one's very specific portrait of a graduate, so that there's an expectation that we'll do that, but it doesn't yet say that. The second goal says maintain a culture of climate conducive to high levels of teaching and learning. Um, so in essence, you have statements already talking about that. Um, again, a goal that gets too worried, I don't, I don't know if that becomes more effective or not. But I'm, I'm, they're not my goal, so I mean, I'm trying to help facilitate your needs. Um, so there's a suggestion that within this goal, there'd be something that refocuses that all this is being done to help kids learn better.
And I suggest that instead of while continuing to include alternatives to outplacement, so basically that, 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 that chunk there, meet them, meet or maintain them while, um, seeking out alternate funding streams.
Including non. Because can we use the original piece then here that said including non-traditional sources of revenue? Take out the specifics, that, that encompasses all of these things.
I agree.
Well, maybe we need the, to ensure the quality education, while we're needing to meet that.
Yeah, so just up to that.
Just up to two, to ensure.
But to.
Assess our district. Services.
Yeah, right there.
Right to here.
Yeah, and then leave.
And bring it back.
Yep.
And it probably takes a while, I'm not sure that you need that.
Assess our district needs and advocate for resources to maintain them while including non-traditional sources of revenue and ensuring.
Yeah, you just put commas around it, that's a positive, it's fine.
Assess our district needs and advocate for resources to meet, maintain them while including non-traditional sources of revenue and ensuring equality.
Saying while pursuing non-traditional sources of revenue, I mean, while including, I don't know what we, we really have to kind of go after some of that stuff, it's not really a question of. I like that pursuing.
Pursuing is the word.
Yeah. If someone's going to give it to us, of course, we're going to take it, but in cases like this, I feel like we have to pursue it. And, or, I don't know if pursue is the right word, but, um.
It's a good word. Is it the best? We'll find out, but it's a great word.
Taken up from previous goals.
Yeah. Can you please put a comma after them and a comma after rev- revenue? A comma.
I'm just kidding, Kate, I just wanted to see if you were on, on your game.
And take out from previous goals, you don't want to have previous goals on there.
I'm here.
Or just don't take out the previous goals part, portion.
Please.
I like it.
I'm getting a sense of more consensus about this statement than the last.
Yes.
I like that one.
Are we leaving meet slash maintain or are we picking between those two words?
I would say have one or the other.
Yeah.
I think it should be meet, because, yes, we haven't maintained.
Yeah, I agree.
That's fine.
Last chance to complain?
I'm good.
Come on, Nick, this is not complaining.
No, it's not, it's, it's helping, I think we've all contributed to this.
For asking.
I love this kind of work because I love it when people are all chipping in and helping, so. Um, thank you for making my evening better than sitting around watching TV. I'm, actually, after last night, I don't want to look at my.
I don't think anybody knows.
So. So let's just, if we can take a look at those first three just for a second. Um, I, I heard good, strong consensus on all of them, but let's take one last moment to make sure people are still comfortable with it. In the absence of somebody jumping into this thinking, I think we're ready for our last conversation.
Is this, are we limiting ourselves to the three?
No, uh, the other issue that came up fairly strongly was the issue of diversity and inclusion. The question was, and, and my, my sense of the group was that I'm not sure there was a great deal of, um, of, uh, agreement on what that, maybe, well, I mean, maybe it just will go fairly easy. But I thought that the, uh, conversation needed to take place about what people mean by that. Because I got a sense that different people think that means different things and I want to make sure that whatever goal you have meets the needs of the consensus of the group.
Yeah, because let's go back to the other, the number four that we had, um, that we created, I think you, someone you wrote down.
Um, I didn't like it here, but I did have.
Oh, Dr. Willetts has it on here, number four, great nurture, support a diverse and inclusive community where every member is acknowledged, respected, and has the necessary resources to thrive. Race, gender expression, et cetera. Don't. Where did it go? No, I said, no, Moses.
Stop it, you're trying to upset us. Now he's just messing with you.
So, um, so the, the goal of the tolerant motivation shall, and again, we're just giving this as a start to the conversation, create or nurture a supportive, diverse and inclusive community where every member is acknowledged, respected, and has the necessary resources to thrive. Um, among those things, we talked about race, gender, expression, et cetera. So, um, how does that, how do you all react to that statement? Let me put it that way.
I personally like the statement that we came up with and that's why when you said you didn't have it, I was like, oh, no, 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 we had a same statement.
I guess my only question is how will the board event create a diverse community? Like, how can we achieve that part of the goal?
I think that that goes back to.
To come through, like, supporting certain hiring practices through our administrators in central office, um, things like that.
And also being open to open choice and also being a wide, uh, inclusive enough community that folks of, more folks of color would want to move to our town.
If you substitute nurture, create by the word nurture, um, that might help that question because, you know, you're right, it's hollow, you're, it's a ways away from most centers where you would draw people from closely. So, um, but by, you know, rather than say create, which we forget to create this theory, but we can nurture it. And I, I'm, because that might be a stronger word or a more appropriate word.
Reenie? Um, I just wanted to say, I'm hopeful that maybe like the end word just says race, gender expression, et cetera. I, I don't love that only because it's only two things and I feel like, you know, it's, that, that there may be a feeling like, well, my situation is being left out, you know what I mean? When you, when you write two and then suddenly now the rest are et cetera.
Yeah, we definitely agree with that.
It, it doesn't feel right, so that's part, that's the part I don't really want.
I think that was more to help us frame the conversation, I would, I would.
I will say, but I, I think that is a work on that and figure out a way to say that differently.
Absolutely.
Whatever that is, and I don't really, I may. Don't think it's wrong. Say, I don't have a suggestion right off the top of my head, but. And maybe we don't need it, maybe it already says it within the body of what, what we have, but.
So one of the issues that is coming up a lot, um, around the country is just having an understanding of the issues, which I'm not sure if this, and maybe you don't need it, but, um, that it's not just about helping people feel good and respected, but that they have an understanding of what the world is like around them or elsewhere. And again, I'm just sort of pulling from things I'm hearing around the country, but this is your goal, so. And again, I'm just sort of pulling from things I'm hearing around the country, but this is your goal, so I want you all to be comfortable with it.
And I do like that suggestion of the nurture versus the create, because I think that kind of goes along with what you're saying, because to nurture, you understand, you know, so I think that that verbiage.
So, would people be comfortable with the word nurture instead of create?
Can we have nurture and support?
Yeah, I would like, yeah, that would be great. Just that you wrote behind Harvard.
So, nurture and support, yeah.
Just kidding. So, every member, and we could, I don't know how you all would feel about this, but we could, a little positive act for members, saying every member, comma, regardless of their identity, his, her, their identity, if you want to go super accurate, regardless of their identity, is acknowledged, respected, and has the necessary resources to thrive. Can we say student instead of member? Do we want to say student instead of member?
Well, what about the teachers?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yes, no, I was just thinking that as I said that, but we are, we're all about the students first, right? I don't know, I'm just.
I think it's more than.
I don't think, this is, you know, why don't we just say every person or every town public, I don't know, I hate, I don't like the word member. It's going to be like student or educator of town public schools, something like that.
Every community member, would you, no, inclusive community wherever, community member, that's redundant. Where every.
I don't know, person, can I?
Person, comma, regardless of their identity, comma, is acknowledged, respected, and has the necessary drive. I'm okay with this.
Can we, can we possibly just add factor thrive? I'd like to say maybe, you know, not just in school, but in the greater community and.
Yeah.
And after, like, after their.
Post-graduation?
Full experience, like, out in the.
But do we have, like, any real ability to make that happen once they leave the, you know, as the Board of Ed, do we have an ability to make that happen once they leave here? I guess it's just a question.
But we're preparing them.
Right, well, that's not what, that was.
So, would changing, and maybe it's a bad idea, but the necessary tools to thrive versus necessary resources? That you're equipping them with skills and abilities to thrive in a diverse world.
Oh, how about that? The necessary skills and abilities to thrive in a diverse world. But then you're saying diverse twice in the same, I don't like that.
Well, we're going to fix that. If you just say nurture, support, and inclusive community.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, so take up that first. Just be like the first, the first, the first, we're just going to do support and inclusive.
Yeah, the end.
And inclusive.
Yeah, I'm just going to throw out there, just for everyone's thoughts, we have heard from students, graduates, coming back to Tallinn to explain to us their experience out in the world after leaving Tallinn schools. So, yes, it is our responsibility.
I like this.
So, I guess the two questions I would ask, does anybody have a problem with it? I'm not sensing that, but I want to ask, and then secondly, is there something missing from this?
Yeah, I just have a suggestion, and I'm not married to it, so whatever. Has the necessary resources to thrive at school, in the community, and in our diverse world? You know what I mean? Just adding a couple of, I guess, opals to that. It's just a suggestion. And in, and maybe our diverse world, or in the diverse world.
Is regardless of their identity is kind of redundant if we're including every person?
I didn't hear you.
Is regardless of their identities redundant if we're including every person?
No, I don't think it is, because it shows people that we see them.
Because that's what Pete was saying with, like, you know, the he, she, like, all the difference. So, I think that that was trying to tie that up into.
I'm only going to say, this is a little word.
Yeah.
Does it need to be two sentences? Or something, I just feel like it's a whole lot of words, a whole lot of commas.
It's a big concept. There's never too many commas. Especially if they're properly used.
Let's look it up on Google, what's the world's longest, we're not secretary, can we read that?
There's a book with three sentences, it's written in Spanish, and a lot of commas.
I mean, if we wanted, if we wanted to, now, I'm not the educator, but we could put is acknowledged and respected, period, and ensure they have the necessary resources to thrive in the school, community, or diverse world.
Yeah, that would be the logical place to kind of start with the thought.
Instead of a semicolon or a.
No, semicolon.
I know, it's trying to throw you into a tailspin.
Can we repeat that, how we want to do it?
Suggestion for a new sentence after the word respected.
So, change is acknowledged and respected. We get rid of the comma, and respected, period, and then get rid of and, and then ensure the necess, the necessary resources, I don't know.
Although provide. Although provided.
They have the necessary resources to thrive at school.
Or, sorry, sorry, this, this, this will ensure that our students have the necessary blah blah blah. Not blah blah blah. Tallinn students have the necessary resources, blah, yeah. Just a suggestion.
She did.
I put blah, but she missed it.
You meant, you wrote like blah blah blah.
Oh, yeah, it's writing blah.
Blah blah blah. Et cetera, et cetera.
Oh, wait a minute, how about this?
Stop it. Oh, nice.
So, if we go back to the, sort of the preamble, the Tallinn Public Schools and the Tallinn Board of Education shall nurture and support an inclusive community where every person, regardless of their identity, is acknowledged and respected. This will ensure the Tallinn students and staff or members of the Tallinn community, I, I, because we talked at one point about it not just being about students, but that's different, the first part could be more broad, and you're, you're focusing on the outcome for your students. So, that could be very appropriate, the way it's written, I just throw it out there to have you think about that.
Yeah, I like that thought. I, I think it's, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm talking too much, but I, I like the first sentence being kind of about everybody, and then the second sentence being like, this is the why.
Well, it's zoned in on our students.
Right. I, I really like this, the way it stands, I think that, I wish that our youngins were still with us, because I would really like to know what they thought about it, but it is what it is, and SAT is SAT, so.
Yeah. Um, can we, I'm sorry, this is being, like, can we, is this tonight finite? Can we put an asterisk next to this? And, and see what Sarah and Alexandra have to say? It's tonight in Hungary.
So, so what I would envision is that you, you have a draft, that you would take time to think about it, and then at the next board meeting, when you can take official action, you can vote on these goals. At that point, they could have a copy, they could make their suggestions, you could amend this and pass it with their suggestions if they had it. So, there's no reason you couldn't do that.
I like that, can we, can we do that, Ashley?
Absolutely.
Awesome, thank you, I think they'd appreciate it as well.
I like that video too.
Yeah, and plus, we're missing board members, so they're going to sign up, they should, should know what they are.
So, there's a lot of silence, but I think that could be a good sign. I, you know, I don't want to make this meeting go longer than it needs to, but if you've got what you're looking for, then I'd say, you know, we might want to talk a little bit about next steps, but I'm not sure that we need to go into a lot of that time crafting these when you seem to be.
And strategic prevention is something that filters out into the whole community.
I think somehow we did bring up mental health on our sheet, but somehow it was combined into something else.
I think that, actually, the intent was that too, was more than just everybody feeling good about school, but that that included, and maybe we want to revisit whether the language covers that or not, but the idea of mental health, you know, culture and climate conducive to learning also means that students are mentally prepared to learn. I think it was implied in the conversation we had, that that's, so this is the catch for that, I would say, but again, this is something the board feels needs to be identified, or, I mean, we should certainly be adequate to that to include that. But that was the intent from the conversation.
I think we'd be at a loss if we, we didn't continue talking about strategic prevention, particularly with regard to suicide and substance abuse, as it has been such a problem, an issue for tallinn. So, I think that we should probably think about being explicit about it in number two. You know, like, kind of maybe adding a phrase, you know, utilizing. Or strategic prevention model. Karen knows more about this than I do, but I think that we should be explicit, so that we can continue the work, and then look for synchronicities with the, the, what I already, the town council's doing.
I, well, and again, I try never to influence goals in a way I think they need to go, so I'll be careful. But I, I think that when you mention a specific program, that it might tie you down in a way that keeping it more broad allowing you to focus on that solution, but it might also give you direction in another way, so, yeah.
I just can say, perhaps I could follow through the assess our district needs and advocate for resources goal. Just in terms of strategic prevention, I remember having a presentation on it in 2018, and then I never really heard anything else about it since, so I would feel uncomfortable putting that on our goals as a specific, but if there was a way to include the mental and physical health, well, just put it in.
Strategic prevention framework is a model that that we are utilizing, I mean, it, it does filter out into the community as a bigger model, but it encompasses a lot of things, it's not just a specific program. I don't know, maybe Dr. Willett wants to weigh in on that one.
Yeah, we're trying to find language that will capture this, but I do think that it makes sense to have some mental, some explicit mention of it, given the, the work that, you know, that the community's trying to do, it does make sense.
I just don't know that culture and climate really covers what we want to cover.
Well, I think that's why he's trying to add that. That, that little mental health, mental and physical health, he's trying to come up with a, a way to put it.
Dr. Willett, could you give us the, or Karen, could you give us examples of what the strategic framework kind of did, like?
The strategic prevention framework for a span of time was, was a organization that also encompassed things like ERACE and executed things like the ERACE survey, as well as a variety of community, you know, providing a variety of community resources, events, and initiatives to try to do things like reduce opiate abuse, identify risky and abusive behaviors, you know, in kids, and then be able to use that data to address the problems, that type of thing. And last, I think last, the last board was also spinning that into advocacy for things like protecting the community from, you know, what it was perceiving as marijuana, you know, marijuana issues within the community, or potentially, you know, things in the community that would result in the spread, like a, you know, like businesses that were involved in, in selling certain substances, that type of thing.
So, maybe you want to put, like, then protecting the mental and physical health. You know, something along that line of.
So, when I, when I think of culture and climate, I think of like, you know, what it means to be a Tallinn Eagle. You know, like, I think about, like, what it feels like in the building, like, the vibe of the building. That's what I think of when I think of culture and climate, because that's what my understanding is of those concepts. So, I, I am a little concerned with conflating the very important work of saving lives into the vibe of the school. So, I am, what I'm suggesting is that this kind of strategic prevention framework orientation might be more appropriate to be put in number three. If we're going to, if we're going to kind of say, yeah, we're going to do just four goals, it might fit more logically with three, it's just a suggestion.
So, let me try to put a little context to what I think is going to happen next. Dr. Willett's going to take these goals after they are endorsed by the board, go back to his staff with the goals they had worked on, and find alignment, and look to develop an action plan or align their action plan with these goals, so that while, in the goal that might say, and again, they're going to be your goals, might say protecting mental and physical health, and the action plan would include the initiative as one of their actions for resolving that problem. So, you know, you're implying in the goal, the expectation will be that it's in the action plan, so it's not gloss. But again, I'm just trying to help, but I might be in the way, so I want you all to figure out, you've been doing really great, I'm coming up with words you all agree with, I want you to do that here too.
I feel like it does fit better under number three, Kate said.
Which? I feel like number three talks more about, like, resources and things like that, where number two is really more about supporting each other and creating a climate that would maybe, you know, help to keep away from some of those years, or support people who are struggling, and that type of a thing, so. Personally, I think number two is really more the place for it, but.
Well, I was thinking number two, just because, you know, the mental health aspect with the culture that we have, or, you know, the drug use and, you know, various topics kind of fall into where we are as a society.
See, in my mind, culture is a broader word than just how kids feel about the high school, but it doesn't matter what I think, because part of what you have to think about is when we designate these goals out for our community, what are they going to do? Because if your goal is going to be, I'll use the term confusing to your community, or not clear enough, then it won't have the effectiveness that would if people see that goal and really understand what you meant. So, I mean, as I said, personally, culture doesn't scare me when I look at the sentence, but it's not my goal, it's yours, and I do recognize that other people may look at that word the way you are and say, this is way beyond just culture, this is something more, so. Hopefully, we can come up with that later, you've done great so far, let's see how we can, Dr. Willett's working his tail off, come up with all of this.
I agree, I agree, that it's much more than culture and climate what we're talking about, and when we talk about resources, we're not just talking about money, we're talking about staff, we're talking about mental health resources, we're talking about a, a lot more than just resources in that sense, so. I feel like it could be part of number three, or we just make it number five. I feel like it could be part of number three, or we just make it number five.
I actually like Walt's option two.
Walt's option two.
That one.
You have to do it twice.
Yeah.
You could go leading to individual student success again, huh?
Yeah, that's true. So now you just took it out.
Two syllables and you can use it anyway. How do the folks feel about that? We take a culture and climate that supports high levels of learning, engagement, and mental and physical health.
I like individual that.
That leads to.
Yeah, get the individual student success. So leave your person over like four spots. There you go.
Does anyone care if I read it all?
Say it.
Go for it. Maintain the culture and climate that supports high levels of learning, engagement, and the mental and physical health that leads to the individual student success.
One thing that crosses my mind that this is really pertinent to where we are without COVID. Because so much of this is way beyond just, um, something that you would normally want to do with your students outside of COVID. But with COVID, so much of, and this is what the commissioner's been focusing on and to some extent, the, the governor even, it's about the social emotional wellbeing of kids almost more important than what they actually learn in their lessons. And so I think that, and again, if you're not comfortable with the language, you can fix that, but in my mind, that's a very important goal, given where we are right now.
So does that address what Karen, Karen, do you feel like that addresses what you were, it's, it's on level anyway?
Yeah, I guess I repaired that. I, I don't know what else to suggest other than making it something.
I like it. I like the option two.
Yeah.
The word the, for mental. I feel like we need a verb there.
Protect.
No, if that's what I had.
Not protector. Where did that go, Walt?
It's a lot of pressure.
It's a lot of pressure.
Protects mental and physical health or?
Protect.
Or they end up saying protecting mental and physical health. But I don't know.
I like, yeah, protect seems like maybe.
Is that what you meant, Kate?
Yeah. Well, mental and physical wellbeing.
I like wellbeing better.
Yeah. Well, being.
Yeah.
So now I've got to be a pain in butt again. Maintain. Um, I would argue that we, we don't have
Yeah, we don't have that yet.
The resources that, that are promoting the mental and physical wellbeing, that would make sense that it's needed.
How about provide?
Provide. I would be comfortable with provide.
Did you get that?
Bye, they culture.
Instead of provide?
Provide.
Instead of maintain?
Provide. Yeah, provides.
We're gonna have to play a little faster now.
Provide and culture.
Provide, encourage, um.
Provide's a harder word. I mean, it, it indicates.
An action.
An action.
Right. I don't know if I like provide because are we gonna actually be, I hate to say providing to, to describe it right. I don't think we're gonna be actually doing the execution, executing of that. So how do we support or? I think, uh, yeah.
I agree.
You guys should be mentally hea- mental, mentally healthy. You should.
We're just.
Yeah, encourage is, yeah, sorry.
I don't know. I, I didn't like provide. I don't know, get an alternative.
It should be a separate thing because it's kind of a separate concept of reporting.
I, I like that.
I like encourage.
Have support in there like forward later.
Yeah, because of support and then you have five word letters and support. So take out the first one.
Yeah.
Encourage.
I like it.
Encourage, create, culture. Uh, I don't like encourage.
It's your spirits.
Do we want to say create? That it, that assumes it doesn't exist in any fashion before.
Right. And my, my point is, is we're not gonna actually be implementing this, so we're, I hate to say.
We're, we're, we're behind the scene.
We're behind it. We're brutal.
Well, I don't know. See, but I, I wonder if you are encouraging or providing it because there's a lot of little things that go on in the school day that relate to that, that might not be an entire initiative that costs money, but it's some of it to stay in mind. Providing that special development to your staff to be mindful of what the children are going through and how to react to it, um, how to.
I like, I like foster.
What here we got?
Walt's a keyboard.
That can't be a limit.
How about promote and bolster?
Inspire?
Oh, inspire. Inspire, promote, and bolster. Inspire, comma.
Five parts.
Yes, and then another comma because you need to have the Oxford comma.
But you can't have promote and then promote again.
Yeah, no, no.
You have, Pete, you have two promotes.
Stop it, inspire.
Yes.
I did like foster when he put that there too, just as another option.
Like foster, yeah.
I like foster. I would do that.
Yeah, I like foster.
I would foster that.
So are we taking out inspire totally or do you want to do inspire and foster?
No, too early.
Tonight is too early. Inspire is a spark. Foster is the maintenance.
Here we go, inspire.
That's just a little too much.
Once again, how many strikes is this now?
I'm not lucky. I can do this all day. Big words.
Maybe this is too much.
Yeah, too much.
A.
Oscar.
On top.
See all yours turn, everybody's thinking.
Well, he keeps changing it every time I read it through.
I told you we're good.
Yeah.
Well, that promotes mental, like, I can go back. I love the learning age, promotes mental and physical wellbeing.
Comma after wellbeing.
Now he's changing something else.
Well, I'm trying to make it flow. Foster, culture, and climate supports high levels of student learning and engagement. It promotes mental and physical wellbeing.
I like leading.
And leads to individual student success.
Comma leading.
Yeah, I like comma leading better. I do too.
Say again?
The, the original comma.
Well, my, after wellbeing, and then.
It promotes.
So then go to the next line, wellbeing, comma.
Yeah.
Cause he told you comma now a couple times. That's where it goes.
It promotes mental and.
And leading to.
Yeah, get it leading.
And.
Okay, give it a and.
Leading.
Yeah, leading. There we go.
Don't touch it anymore now.
Yeah.
Stuck with the keyboard.
Okay, how do we feel about that now?
I like.
I, I would prefer which instead of that, unless me being super anal.
Yeah. Like that, Karen.
But, well, I guess the question is, are you providing, uh, supporting high levels of learning and engagement and also providing a climate that promotes mental and physical wellbeing? Or does learning, high levels of learning and engagement create the promotion of mental and physical wellbeing? So I saw that it's two separate things, which we require an and, but.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
It might need to sound like a problem.
She's right.
No, I, I, Walt, I think we're going back the other way more. It's, it's two separate thoughts versus one leading to the other.
Okay.
So that.
Here it.
Regagement and promotes mental and physical wellbeing. That could be.
How about promotes?
Yeah, that's how we got to that. Because it's high levels of learning and engagement and, you know, so that's like a lot.
That, that's true because the culture and climate could also lead to individual student success versus the other two things leading to, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense to me now. Karen, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah. Okay, so are we good with this number two now?
In the absence of people commenting, I would say people are least comfortable with this. Is that fair?
Yes, yes.
I mean, nobody's been shy about what they didn't like so far, and I can hope that you were encouraged to tell us if you're not comfortable with something, but, um. Oh, so I'm gonna hazard a comment and say that it looks like we did the work we set out to do tonight.
Thank you.
I will agree with that.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome. So again, my suggestion is have these available to the board for the next board meeting. Share it with the student reps, get their feedback, um, and, and vote on it at your next board meeting.
Now you're gonna put the sun up.
Yeah, can we ask that you send the, uh, draft, Ashley, uh, to Summer and Alexandra so they can take a peek at it before we meet?
Perfect. You're putting it on the dashboard, correct?
Did you say you could do that?
Yes, she did.
Okay, sorry.
I'm just making sure that Dr. Willa is putting it somewhere accessible so that we can actually get to them.
Well, it would also be part of the board packing, right? So whatever that's available, if it's on the agenda, then the thing would be part of the board pack, which everyone could see several days in advance as well, and we would be discussing.
I'd rather have the students get it before that though.
Okay.
Yeah. Just based on their schedules and things, I, I, I'd rather give them more time than not enough.
So are we good then?
I think we're pretty set now. Um, the board will vote on these. I'm assuming you'll pass them. It would, perhaps some small adjustments, but hopefully not. Um, and then, Dr. Willa, my assumption is that you and your staff are gonna go back, look at the goals as approved and then see how they dovetail.
Yeah, usually I'll put the board goals up at the top of our process for individual school goals and, you know, and so like regarding individual school goals and SIPs.
Okay. So we got a plan going forward.
Perfect.
Okay.
Will you entertain a motion to adjourn?
Nice.
Christina, floor, motion to adjourn.
I vote.
Reading, you saw the second project, um, let's do a roll call. Vote. Griffin, aye. Floor, aye. Reading, aye. And let's get our ladies over here. Karen?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
And then aye as well, therefore we will wrap this up. Eight forty-one. Woo.